Okay, I would like to call to order the October 10th, 2023 Auburn Maine Planning Board Meeting, and I will start with roll call from my left.
Darren Finnegan.
David Trask.
Paul Jacques.
Stacy LeBlanc.
Evan Seer.
Tim DeRouge.
Amanda Garrett.
Okay, seeing as we have two full members missing, Riley Bergeron and Tony Ferraro, we will be elevating, I will be elevating Tim and Amanda to, from associate members to full members. Alrighty, so the next item on the agenda, are they meeting minutes? So, do I have a motion to approve or amend the minutes?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Excellent, okay, the next item on the agenda is Public Hearing Zone Map Amendment, T4.2B, Area B, and I will hand it over to staff.
Thank you. So, we are taking a look today at Area B. This is what we called Option 1, because we have seen, we have talked about rezoning, what we were calling Area B for the past several meetings. We started with a workshop where we, where we decided that we wanted to try to make a connection between Area B and the Carrier Court neighborhood over to what was then called Area A1. Then we came back the next meeting with a few different iterations of that map. One that extended all the way down to where South Main Street meets the Turnpike, and the other that extended down to where, to where LDCR, that zone line in the green, meets Rural Residential. And this is the, this is the map that the Planning Board decided to go with because it more closely resembled the comprehensive plan. There was also discussion about later bringing this back to consider a zone change further south, down to where South Main Street meets the Turnpike, at a density that is closer to eight units an acre. But today is a public hearing to consider rezoning low-density country residential and urban residential areas around Vicar Road to Form-Based Code T-4.2B. The map is shown here, and I am good to answer any questions.
Alright, does anyone have any questions? I know this has been before us several times. I think that, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick one. So, my, so I got clarification that areas that are covered under the, this proposed, well, rather, in order to have that zoning, need public water and sewer, correct? And the plan currently, while not all of those areas have public water and sewer, the plan is to have them have that, is that correct? Or do they actually currently have water and sewer?
They do not currently have water and sewer. I mean, the area by Carrier Court does currently have sewer, I believe, but it's part of a plan to loop, to loop water into this area as well and extend it down to Vicar Road, and, and it's ultimately part of that sewer and water study.
Do we have a timeline currently in place for that work? Otherwise, if we make this change, how do we address potential builders who want to do that without the water and sewer being in place?
Yes. We're in the process of submitting for a grant application, called the Pro Housing Grant, that would build that infrastructure if we get it. If we're not successful, we'll have to figure out a different way to fund that, but it's not that you can't have the zoning in place, it's just that if a development happens, it will only be able to happen at a density of a half an acre per lot. So, you could have a lot that's larger than what's required and still produce some housing, but you'd have to have a half an acre for a septic system. But we are working towards that grant, and we are hopeful if it's funded, that within the next year, we can hopefully see extensions of that.
Okay, so, if we, if we propose the change and it gets approved, then until such time that the water and sewer system is in place, there is a slightly higher density than is allowed right now, but not the full density that would be allowed under T4.2B?
Correct.
Okay.
And we have, we have that in a lot of other areas, where we have an allowance for higher density, but we still have to meet the state funding for that half acre size for the septic system.
Dave touched exactly on the topic I wanted to discuss, but on the tail end of that, if people, if we did go forward with the zone change, having municipal water and sewer is not a mandate to meet the zone, where if somebody chose to purchase and build there and opted voluntarily to have a well and septic on their own accord, this would not stop them from doing that. They could still build, correct?
That's correct, and it also shows the state and the people reviewing those applications that we're serious about this and that Auburn is helping the state meet their housing goals. So I think it does help us make the case for the grant, to show that we're already working on allowing that.
Is this sort of akin to the Turnpike discussion, where without the density or allowance for density, we're unlikely to get the grant to do that work?
It definitely strengthens our application to show that we're willing to allow it, and the only thing standing in the way is that we don't have the money for the infrastructure, so they can help us overcome that hurdle.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment. We'll seek a motion for public comment.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Excellent, so come to the podium. You have five minutes, state your name, address.
Hi, my name is Pam Rousseau, I live at 745 West Auburn Road. I just have a couple of comments. I know that we're gung ho on developing as many, many, making us the second largest city in Maine. I am a little concerned about the amount of water with Lake Auburn, but I also wanted to, I just sort of feel this, that I feel like a lot of this push is because you've been told that LD 2003 is going to make it, so you've got to control this, and I just, I have this, I actually have the final document on my phone, I'll be happy to email it to all of you. It says that, this is on page, oops, let's do that again, one was on page five. And it's a definition, it's multi-family dwellings, multi-family dwelling means a structure contains three or more dwelling units. Alright, so, if it is in Rural Residential right now, that is obviously not going to meet that. And on page six, it talks about eligibility for density bonus, and that it has to be located in which, it's, is located in an area in which multi-family dwellings are allowed per municipal ordinances. So I hope that you're not making all these T24B changes because of, and you may not be, but I'm just throwing it out there, LD 2003, because as you remember, we had over 25,000, 2,500 signatures to not have this development in Auburn. So I just wanted to point those two things out, that I wanted to make sure you understood that LD 2003 does not apply as our zoning is now. It will apply if you change it to T24B.
Okay, anyone else like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, that's a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent, all those in favor? Alrighty, so any discussion, more questions for staff? Thoughts? If not, then I would seek a motion.
Quick question to, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure.
Question was brought up, and it's valid, totally. Does Lake Auburn have the capacity, the volumetric capacity to supply fresh water for Auburn's anticipated or expected growth?
Yeah, so we have spoken with the District Superintendent, we absolutely do have capacity to supply more water than what is being used by both cities right now. Auburn Water in particular, lost a really large customer a few years ago, that was the largest user, and we, we absolutely have capacity to serve more residential uses as well as more businesses. We can get the exact numbers for you. I think that, and Evan, you may know more about the numbers, but I think that we draw right around 2 million gallons a day in Auburn, and there's absolutely more capacity, up to a total of at least 6 million gallons a day. And sewer capacity exists as well.
This question's been posed at LawPac meetings, and I'm not going to remember the percentage off the top of my head, actually I see Mr. Beals here, he's usually pretty good with numbers, perhaps he remembers, but it was, it was somewhere in the, close to, to half capacity. So it's not like we have capacity, but we're very close to reaching capacity, we're, we're only at about half capacity now. So there's a question about whether this is being driven by LD 2003. I would think that in this neighborhood, it's not. This is really expanding what is currently a neighborhood, and it makes sense that if you're going to add, add additional density, that you would do that adjacent to current neighborhoods. It's also important to know that LD 2003 also doesn't affect zones, and it's, it's, it would be in the same document that Mrs. Rousseau quoted. LD 2003 is not applicable in zones that don't have a, a density cap. So, our T4.2B does not have a density cap, and so LD 2003 is actually not applicable in any of those zones because of that, and that's, that's something that came out of the rulemaking.
Yeah, I think there's room for a little clarification on that, too. So the, I think it's true that the affordable housing density increases apply in zones where multi-families are allowed, but because we don't have a prescriptive standard, this would allow for market rate housing and affordable units to be built at the same density in a zone like this, instead of being two and a half times a zone that, that has an artificial density cap, like Urban Residential or Multi-Family Suburban. And also LD 2003 does apply in the other existing zoning districts, like Rural Residential, Low Density Country Residential. It's just that the zones that don't allow for multi-family housing, don't have the two and a half time multiplier. They don't allow for, for affordable housing at the two and a half times the density, but they still allow for an increase in the number of units. We have to allow for an increase in the number of units, based on LD 2003. They just apply differently in different areas, and there's still some debate on some of the nuances of it. We're working with Maine Municipal, Maine Association of Planners and DECD, to make sure that we understand that when we're bringing ordinances back to you to comply with LD 2003. But they do apply throughout the city, it will apply throughout the city, will be mandated to apply it throughout the city, with the exception of the Lake Auburn watershed. Will be exempt from any increase in density that LD 2003 would require elsewhere.
Eric, question for you, there's been a lot of conversation, obviously, around LD 2003 and people's interpretation of what it does and doesn't allow for. And, and I, I guess I won, maybe I, at some point I might have missed one, but does it make sense at some point to have city council, not, not the city council, sorry, the legal council, do a presentation or workshop with us at some point to say, here are the zones that we currently have, and here are what the impact is once this law comes into effect, so that we can really plainly see what, what we currently have, what we would have to potentially support, and understand what those differences are, so that the citizens of the city can clearly understand what it is, without saying, well, I read this, or, or I heard from somebody this. So I guess I'm looking to see if, if that is something that we want to entertain.
Sure, so I'm just going to interject right here, I, I want to kind of stay a little bit focused on this agenda item, but I, I really like your idea, and I wonder if we chat about that during item number 10, miscellaneous items?
Of course.
Let's chat about that, cool, awesome.
Yeah, let's go.
No, because I really like that, too, I like that idea. So at this point in time, any more discussion, dialogue? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion to amend the official city zoning map of the City of Auburn, entitled City Zoning Map, dated May 16, 2016, provides, through its current data revisions as provided under Section 60-5 of the zoning ordinance, to rezone certain land area from the Urban Residential Zoning District and Low Density Country Residential, Residence Zoning District, to the traditional neighborhood Form-Based Code T4.2B zoning district as shown in the corresponding map and presented in materials for this meeting.
Before, there's a second, may I ask for clarification? You made a motion to amend, am I understanding that you didn't make a motion to amend the official zoning map? You made a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to city council that the map be amended, only because as written here, it would imply that we are amending it, but we are now, we're sending a favorable recommendation. So is that, Mr. Trask, is that a, a fair clarification?
Yeah, that's a fair clarification.
Okay.
So would you like for him to just restate it, or where, I think we're clear?
I think, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so everyone got that, right?
I would second that.
Okay, do we have any discussion, dialogue around the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Alright, excellent, motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Public Hearing Zone Text Amendment, and I will hand it over to staff. This is around the, the tiny lot, seven square foot, seven hundred square feet, all that kind of good stuff that we've already chatted about previously, but I'll hand it over to staff.
Thank you. So, we talked about this, this last meeting. The issue at hand is that currently, the way that our ordinance is written, the minimum size for, for dwelling units in Auburn is 700 square feet. Tiny houses allow, are allowed under 400 square feet, 400 and under, so that means between 401 square feet currently and 699 square feet, there is no allowance for those structures in Auburn. So, at the last meeting, we discussed lowering the minimum housing size to 190 square feet was our suggestion, and the Planning Board thought it was better to differentiate between the principal dwelling unit with the, with the minimum dwelling size being 400 square feet above grade, and accessory dwelling units, which includes tiny houses, with the, with the minimum dwelling size being 190 square feet above grade, which matches the IRC, which is how tiny houses would be regulated if they're built on, if they're built, if they're stick-built and not on a trailer and axle. So, today, we are suggesting a text amendment that differentiates between dwellings, which should be a minimum of 400 square feet, and accessory dwellings, which should be a minimum of 190 square feet. But either way, it will close the gap between 400 and 700 square feet that currently are not allowed.
Okay, any questions?
One. The, the staff suggestion recommendation, when I read it, I, I think I understand the intent, but we talk-
That's good, because I don't, and I was going to ask about it.
Yeah, yeah, well, I think that, I think we're, we're adding, I think the recommendation is that we include the dwelling unit must be at least 400 square feet unless the building code is standard pursuant to blah, 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 adopts a different minimum standard, if so, that standard applies. I think the intent is for an accessory dwelling unit, an ADU must be at least 190 square feet above grade unless, but it just doesn't read that way, and I just, I want to make sure that that was, there's recommendation from the city.
I'm sorry, let me just-
Yep, page, page two of two-
Yep.
-the Planning Board, staff suggestion, because it says, there's a semicolon, if so, that standard applies for an accessory dwelling unit of 190 square feet above size, above grade in size, it just kind of rambles, and I think that there was a period, and then a second thought with regard to the ADU being 190 minimum, I guess.
Oh, I see what you're saying, must be 400 square feet. Sorry, I'm, I'm just trying to think of how to answer your question. I think the, the intent here was to say basically that currently, the state allows for a minimum of 100, or the building code allows for 190, and the intent was really to have our ordinance changed to reflect any future changes in building code. So say the building code raises to like 210 square feet, I think the intent was to also have our ordinance reflect that, so we don't come back here if the building code changes. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, so the dwelling unit must be at least 400 square feet unless different, unless a different standard is introduced, which-
Yeah.
-the ADU must be at least 190 feet, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright.
And I think that the actual ordinance text on the following page is probably clearer than the way that it was described in that paragraph in the staff.
So my question is specific to the text. Did legal counsel go over these, this text yet?
I believe they've seen this one, we've had a lot of them over there. We don't have them review every one, but I do believe that they did review this one. Is there a specific section that, that concerns you?
Well, we're, we're only, we're looking at actually two pages, Section 60-2. You did include Chapter 5, right? But that's the state, that's not us.
Yes, that's just kind of, that's more for background.
Some background, yep.
Yep.
I did think it was interesting that the state saw fit to define duplex, triplex, and quadplex, that was sort of interesting. But back to, back to our actual work. Dwelling one-family detached, I just wanted to make sure that that sentence actually, the, the above grade applies to the 400 square feet as well. So it reads, you know, each one-family detached dwelling unit must be at least 400 square feet, an accessory dwelling unit must be 190 square feet above grade in size, unless the technical building code, da, 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 right, changes. If I read that, it, to me, it just says the one-family detached dwelling unit must be at least 400 square feet, comma, now we'll discuss accessory dwelling units, and the accessory dwelling units must be above grade.
Okay, you're saying that you-
So I, I just want to make sure that counsel has, legal counsel has said that this sentence actually means what we mean it to say, because to me, it doesn't seem to do that.
And your concern is you want to see, we want to make sure that it's 400 square feet above grade, and not altogether, yes.
That was my only concern.
Yeah, I think I'd, I'd, I think I'd err on the side of clarity to say that it must be at least 400 square feet above grade in size, and an accessory detached dwelling unit must be 190 square feet also above grade in size, or something to that effect, that where there's clarification.
I think we could make it clear, if you wanted to recommend that text.
I would actually make a motion, if we do, Sally has been quite adamant that if we change words, that we need to do a new public hearing. I would argue that changing this sentence doesn't change at all the discussion, it literally just makes it quite clear what we're, we're trying to say.
I would argue the same.
Okay.
Clarify, it doesn't actually change what it's-
Okay. When it comes time, I'm going to, would ask either that Dave make a motion, that it be amended to say that, or I'll do it.
How, how do we go about not only, because I think it does say, our suggestion certainly says that, but the language doesn't, so do we, how do we actually incorporate the request to make that a change?
I think we amend the language to say exactly what you, you just said, and I make a motion to do a favorable recommendation with the following text change.
And then did you also want to have Sally take a look at it?
I think, I think if, I think if we do what Dave said, I don't think, I think it's incredibly clear, I think if we don't do that, then I would want Sally to look at it, to make sure it really does do that.
I agree, I think if you added the words above grade after 400 square feet, it would be bulletproof.
Okay. Alright, so point of order as well, so we have, this is item number four on the agenda, it's a public hearing, right, reviewing a zoning text amendment change, with a favorable recommendation to city council, right? And so when I look at the motion, it says staff suggest holding a public hearing as part of the motion. So we're holding a public hearing. So did you want a second public hearing?
Uh, it's just the suggestion, so this time it looks like we just didn't separate out the recommended, like the suggestion for the action and the, and the motion are kind of pressed together here.
Yeah, so kind of from a motion standpoint, we're having a public hearing?
So we don't need to include that in our suggestion?
I wouldn't think we would.
Motion, correct?
No.
Yep, okay, great, awesome. Alright, so any other questions, comments for staff? Okay, seeing none, I would seek a motion to open public comment.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Excellent, okay, so opening up public comment, you have five minutes, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Okay, seeing none, I would seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor? Perfect. Anyway, so, okay, so I think we had some good dialogue and discussion around the text amendment. I really appreciate, you know, your thoughts and considerations and your eagle eye around that, so. Any other questions for staff? If not, we can talk about a motion.
So I'll go ahead and put out a motion that we recommend, that we've sent forward a positive recommendation to the council supporting the proposed changes to amend the 700 square foot requirement for single-family home minimum dwelling size, to include the dwelling unit must be at least 400 square feet above grade in size, unless the Technical Building Code and Standards Board pursuant to 10 MRS 9722 adopts a different minimum standard, if so, that standard applies. For an accessory dwelling unit, an accessory dwelling unit must be at least 190 square feet above grade in size, unless the Technical Building Code and Standards Board pursuant to 10 MRS 9722 adopts a minimum standard, if so, that standard applies for an accessory dwelling. I would also request that Section 60-2, Definitions Number 2, read, each one-family detached dwelling unit must be at least 400 square feet above grade in size, and an accessory detached dwelling unit must be 190 square feet above grade in size, unless the Technical Building Code and Standards Board pursuant to 10 MRS 9722 adopts a different minimum standard, if so, that standard applies.
Alright, do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have any thoughts, that was a really good motion, by the way, I appreciate it. Any thoughts, considerations of that? Alright, so all those in favor? Okay, motion carries, excellent, perfect. Alrighty, so I do see that we have Tony Ferraro showed up, so excellent, perfect. At this point in time, I think we'll stay status quo in terms of the board members, everything after this is a workshop, so we have no further items necessarily that we're voting on? Correct? Okay, so we will proceed.
So for the Lake Auburn watershed updates, we wanted to have a workshop ahead of an eventual public hearing. We hope that that public hearing will be at the November Planning Board meeting, and we'll ask you to, as part of the discussion, go ahead and schedule that for the November that for the November fourteen planning board meeting. We've really, for, for workshop purposes, we probably didn't have to break it up this way, but for public hearings, there will be essentially three items that are part of that. The board has made recommendations on some of the changes in the past, over the last couple of years, but a lot has happened in the meantime between a lawsuit from the city of Lewiston against the Auburn Water District and we, after reviewing with legal counsel, thought it was a lot cleaner to have one final public hearing where you can look at all of the changes together because some of the recommendations to adopt one thing include a recommendation that it should be accompanied by one of the other changes. As an example, the septic systems portion was only recommended if we also changed the one acre minimum lot size to three acres to offset any increase in density. More recently, so we've broken those up here. The, we'll go over each one as part of this workshop. More recently, the Public Utilities Commission complaint filed by a group of residents of Lewiston and Auburn against the Auburn watershed water district was dismissed, finding that the Auburn Water District is doing what they need to, to protect the watershed with some conditions that they file, file a response to the lawsuit that the city of Lewiston has with the Public Utilities Commission to show the closure and what the final outcome of those discussions was. We also have been working with an ad hoc committee for the protection of Lake Auburn that was formed by the Auburn Water District that included membership from city staff in Auburn, city staff in Lewiston, elected officials from Auburn and Lewiston, as well as a representative from the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission that is a resident of Turner. So we've worked through the group of changes that we'll talk about tonight. They did recommend some tweaks, but really the changes are still very similar to what the board had seen in the past with a couple of, a couple of exceptions that we can go over tonight as part of the workshop. So the first being a group of changes to the Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District, the second being a review of the MAP amendment to change the low density country residence zone, the rural residential zone, which has a one acre per unit minimum lot size to low density country, which is a lower density, three acre requirement per unit. And then three and four sort of go together, but they will be separate decisions and they could have separate, separate results. Review the MAP amendment to the Graceland area watershed boundary. The board and the council had passed a version of that change. It was repealed shortly afterwards. Since then, the main drinking water program, this ad hoc committee that I mentioned made up of membership from both cities have, as well as consultants, have peer reviewed that and those groups, the drinking water program, Auburn Water, and the ad hoc committee that includes membership from Lewiston, support the main drinking water program recommendation as a safe, conservative boundary. That changes a substantial portion of what was proposed for change before, but not all of it until there's more monitoring done to determine some of the areas where there's not enough data for everybody to be comfortable as you get closer to the lake. That monitoring is, the details of that are being shelled out now. So while you will be asked to make a decision on the areas that seem acceptable to both cities and the drinking water program, there may be more data coming in the coming months or years that shores up our knowledge of where that line is exactly and, and tries to move the line back further from Graceland Road towards the lake. And then lastly, when the boundary is changed, that opens up the opportunity to change the actual zoning district from the agricultural resource protection zone to something that would allow for housing development that the owner of the land and developer would like to see on that land. And I think one of the things that really strikes me about this that I'm surprised is not a larger part of the discussion is the entirety of that Graceland pit currently allows blasting in bedrock, mining, crushing gravel, processing material, moving material. Less than half of the pit is a newer pit. More than half of it is a grandfathered pit. So there's no legal requirement for reclaiming it. I really think that even if portions of the pit, not that we're proposing developing portions of the pit for something else, but it surprises me that we wouldn't be trying to encourage those to be discontinued over time by finding another use that's suitable, vegetating that site, even developing the site and building stormwater controls. Because blasting into bedrock for forever into the future is, I, in my opinion, more dangerous than seeing some of that pit developed for housing. One of the major components of the text changes is something that the board had already made a recommendation on, but again, we wanted to bring these in front of you as a package and have a final public hearing next month. It changes the septic standard from the current one that requires thirty six inches to the limiting factor, whether that's groundwater ledge or clay layer or other limiting factor, to be existing on site in order for a site to be developable, but then requires that you remove the top twelve inches, most of the organic layer at the soil surface and then set the new system into the well drained soils without a limiting factor in the next twenty four inches down. So it really only guarantees a twenty four inch separation and it removes the organic layer from the base of that system where most of the treatment occurs and sets the system into really well drained soils below that, that organic layer to a standard that doesn't require that you have the thirty six inches on site. It allows for somebody to build that, but it does require that you build a true thirty six inch separation from, from groundwater or ledge or clay, whatever that limiting factor is, to the bottom of the septic system.
Okay. So Eric, just kind of point of order. So I think right now, thank you for giving that overview. I do appreciate and I think it's really good that we're reviewing all of this collectively as one. So did you want to go over like each one independently? Or like, how do you want to approach this? I, I thought the idea was that we're going to go over kind of each one and workshop each one. Did you want to?
Yeah, I think there's a little bit of overlap because some of them are only being recommended if they come along with another one.
Okay.
But I think if we can look at the proposed changes to the overlay district, which include the septic standard.
Okay.
And then we can move on to the next one, which is the one acre to three acre and then the third one, which is the boundary at the southern end of the lake.
Okay.
Or we can merge them if you prefer because there's no-
No, no, no. I appreciate that. So, so talk to me. So we're looking at item number five, right? So it's the septic changes that we've, I think we're all collectively on the same page on that one, but still workshop me that a second time, another time. And then what you said it was hand in glove with, with what other one? Item seven or eight or both?
So the one acre to three acre change on the agenda is number?
Six?
Six.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. To the, oh, yeah, you're right. You're absolutely right. Yep, yep, yep. You're right. Yep. Those two do, do, those two do go together. Okay, perfect. It's all coming back to me.
So any, I guess any questions on the septic system portion? I think we all recognize that it does create some new buildable lots and that's where the one acre to three acre change comes in to make sure that we sort of, we prevent that from happening overall in the watershed.
I do have a question on that. This question is a clarifying question to have on record and also for those that might be watching online. Regarding the changes to the septic system designs within the watershed of Lake Auburn, that does not mean that current septic systems need to be retrofit to meet the new guideline. They would be grandfathered since they are preexisting. Is that correct?
That is correct until such time that they need a replacement. And then, and I think, I'm glad you brought that up because I think that's probably one of the, one of the biggest benefits of this change is that replacements currently can be done just to the main state plumbing code. There's about two hundred and seventy five-ish, approximately it might be two seventy three, existing grandfathered systems in the watershed and only about fifty new ones that meet the current watershed standard. So over time, as those existing two hundred and seventy five need to be replaced, instead of a nine or a twelve inch separation from groundwater or whatever the limiting factor is, they will have to build in a thirty six inch separation if it's physically possible on the site.
So future new installations, new developments, and the repair or replacement of a currently existing would be included in this change?
Yes.
But currently existing, properly operating septic systems would not fall victim to the new change requirements.
Correct. Until such time that they fail.
So I remember talking about this last year. We, I thought about doing like a point of sale as a realtor and I've come up with these situations in the watershed in Auburn of septic systems that are very, very old and just because they're functioning.
I was thinking the same thing.
Doesn't mean that they're actually functioning. So how are you going to figure that out?
So we're looking to include in the changes that they be inspected by the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission at point of sale or every five years. If the inspection reveals that the system is functioning properly, then there's no reason for, no requirement for a replacement. But if-
So-
If they're failing, then they would have to be upgraded to the-
So for instance, I did sell a house. The septic was functioning, but really it was a V wooden trench. And so I feel like a lot of times when I'm selling houses too, I come to the town and there's no septic design on file. I feel like that would be a red flag or maybe a starting point to like check those houses first.
Yeah. And I just want to clarify. So we're proposing that LOPAC would be inspecting existing systems every five years or at the time the property is sold. So whichever date comes sooner, if there was, there could be an old V plank system that's functioning properly, but there's a good chance that there's some failure associated with a system that's as old as when that would have been allowed.
Let's be honest, they're not functioning properly.
Yep.
I mean, they're flushing and they're not, you know, but they're not actually functioning.
With that inspection requirement, we'd be able to catch those, whereas right now we don't, we don't even see those at the time of sale.
And you said every five years. So if we pass this, then it would start when?
It would start on July one, twenty twenty four because we would need this winter to work with the city of Lewiston, LOPAC in Auburn to budget for the capacity to start that.
Yeah. And just to kind of play off of that, I, I do remember a large amount of public comment about upgrading the septic and I think a lot of it was because it did increase the opportunity for building. But I personally feel like getting the septic into the twenty first century is a good positive step forward additionally, having these other parameters, right, around inspections and every five years. And I think that truly meets what we're aiming for, which is protecting Lake Auburn versus like this ancillary argument or thought that it would create more building. I feel like we're protecting Lake Auburn more by bringing it to the twenty first century and putting some guardrails around for safety measures. I absolutely agree.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I guess one question I'd have Eric is with regard to the inspection, to which standard will they be reviewing it?
This one. Right?
They would be looking to make sure that the system, the existing system is functioning to whatever standard it was designed at and that it has not failed. So if there was, you could have an existing system with less than thirty six inches of separation. If it's still functioning as it was designed, then that would not trigger a replacement.
Does that assume that there is a design to be had in the first place? Because it sounds like Tony, there may be some that don't even have a design. Is that, that what would happen in that situation?
They would inspect the tank, inspect the bed and determine if it's still functioning properly. Because there, there could be that circumstance where there's an older system or we can't find the design, but it's still functioning.
But if it needs to be replaced, it has to be replaced to the standard, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
And is there a timeline that, that residents are given to do the replacement?
So, I mean, we don't-
It's not cheap.
No, it's not cheap, but I think that the, the point of sale is probably the best time because there's resources being exchanged to do that. But also, we're going to be working with the city of Lewiston and the ad hoc committee is recommending that we try to fund a pool of resources that could be low interest loans or maybe no interest loans that would help people that meet certain income guidelines that are unable to, to comply. There's not an exact standard, but it would come down to working with them to see, are they out there soliciting bids? Did they get a new design? What's the contractor's schedule? And certainly within twelve months, but it could take a number of months to get a contractor to do that for you in this market.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I guess I'm concerned, given the, the age of our, not only of their building, infrastructure, but also the age of the people that live here likely in that watershed area, whether or not they may or may not have the financial means, especially if they're retired, with which to afford that type of change. So it's nice to hear that there are, that we're considering trying to find ways to, to support those changes because certainly they're important.
Yeah, we, for the lower, lowest of incomes, we have the ability to use CDVG funds sometimes for that funding. The other thing is the city can order the repair and then if the, and cooperatively in many cases, but even if it's not cooperative, the city could follow the legal process to go in and have that system replaced and then put a lien on the property for that amount if we had to. But we're looking to have a pool of resources that we don't have right now that could be more broadly applied to, to a loan pool. And the, I can't speak for the city of Lewiston or the Auburn council, but the committee that's been working on this, the ad hoc committee, is recommending that we establish that type of a system. And we're looking at some, some drinking water program grants that might be used to do a startup year, funding a staff position, as well as some resources to, to have that type of system.
My last question for you, Eric. You mentioned a few moments ago regarding the main state plumbing code. This change would be more or less restrictive than the state mandates?
More restrictive, significantly more restrictive.
Okay. On that note, playing devil's advocate, would a homeowner have ground to stand on legally to say my system meets state code, state law usurps municipal law? What can the city do about that, if anything?
So the, the state law specifically allows for communities to have a more stringent standard, but not a less stringent standard?
Thank you. I wanted people to hear that. Thank you.
Followed that. Another significant change that's part of this chapter as proposed is that we, based on recommend, previous discussions and recommendations of, this one came from the city council, this will prohibit new animal farms in the watershed. It does allow for some small scale like hobby farm or production of your own food. That can include a small number of animals, but it doesn't allow for new commercial animal farms. It defines those clearly. So we have a good definition now in the draft ordinance. It reiterates that the decision that's already been made with the ag zone, that we don't allow housing in the agricultural zone in the watershed accessory to a farm. It adds a, or expands a setback from fifty to a hundred feet for an agricultural buffer strip along streams, whether they're seasonal or year round, changes that from fifty to a hundred. It prohibits the spreading of municipal sludge. That's something that the ordinance allowed for, still allows for today. It's not happening because all of the PFAS controversy that's been going on and the issues, but we thought it made, made sense to clear that up and make sure that it's not allowed in the Lake Auburn watershed. um, but we thought it made, made sense to clear that up and make sure that it's not allowed in the Lake Auburn watershed. Um, it does still allow for some spreading of manure for existing agricultural fields, um, but it updates the standard to match the state's latest, uh, nutrient management standards instead of the nineteen-eighties standard that, we had before. It expands a setback that we had from Lake Auburn, um, in certain soil types, um, for new septic systems, it expands that, um, to four hundred feet, but it also expands it in the sense that it applies to streams, uh, in the watershed, um, year-round and perennial based on the USGS maps, um, that we have access to. Um, so it would further limit the places where you could put a new septic system to be further from those systems, uh, streams rather, as well as the lake. It also, let's see, last, last piece. I feel like I'm missing one of them. Nope, I think that's it, so, as far as the environmental regulations. And the other piece that you'd already done and the council has already adopted is the ag zone piece where no more houses in the ag zoned, portions of the watershed.
Evan's been trying to get his.
I, I have only one question. Um, there's language in here requiring, um, uh, expansion of a non-hobby farm to receive approval from the watershed manager, that makes sense, right? We're saying, we won't go forward this unless you go to this person and they okay this. My question is about the septic, um, inspections. Because this says the, the, they, these systems shall be inspected by LOPAC or its designee every five years, or at the time of property, that a property is sold, whichever, uh, comes sooner. We can compel someone to go ask the watershed manager and come back with an answer, can we come? We can't compel LOPAC to, um, conduct these inspections.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have to work with LOPAC on implementing that program. The ad hoc committee, which I understand is not the entirety of the LOPAC board, um, but there were representatives there, um, significant number of representatives from the LOPAC board were supportive of that change if we added or their designee, um, because we could also have, we could also have a list of qualified inspectors that become their designee if they don't have the staff capacity to do it, um, that would provide an inspection report back to, to LOPAC.
I understand that, this language is coming from that committee, because this language came from LOPAC as a recommendation to AWD.
Yeah.
Um, except that AWD can compel LOPAC to do that. Uh, my question is, can we write, shall be inspected by LOPAC or its designee? Can, can we compel them?
So my understanding is that we were achieving one of their recommendations by doing this, and we did have LOPAC membership present in these discussions, and this is the language they recommended. If LOPAC said, we don't care about septic systems and we don't want to waste our time inspecting them, then we would definitely have a problem. I don't think that's going to happen, but we would come back to you.
I, I don't think it's going to happen, I guess I'm getting really pedantic here and nitpicky and I'm saying that if we can't compel them, then we shouldn't have language that compels them. That's, that's all I'm saying. Um, certainly I know that LOPAC is interested in doing that, it was a recommendation that we put forward, uh, to, to AWD. Um, I just think, you know, for argument's sake that.
I can, I, I get your point.
Someone to do it, then we shouldn't do it in our ordinance, that's all.
Um, you could recommend we change it to May, I guess.
So what I hear Eric saying is that the language is in here, it was, it was directed by LOPAC and that they're going to move forward to create a program, so I guess, where are you feeling like there's a barrier?
Functionally, there is no barrier. I don't like that we would have language that come, that compels an organization that we can't compel to do anything. We, we can't compel them to do anything, but we have ordinance language here that compels them to do something.
Is that true? Eric, we have language in here that, that directs action? And, and Evan is saying that that language is not, shouldn't be in there?
So I, it's correct that we have language that says that they shall do something. It's mandatory that they do this based on our ordinance.
And that LOPAC gave us this, this suggestion?
LOPAC wanted that.
Wanted that, okay. They wanted it and we put it in there.
Yep.
I would, LOPAC wanted this when they sent it to AWD. I, I would suspect that whoever was sitting on that committee from LOPAC may not have understood the implication of utilizing the same language.
We, we spent a significant time discussing that with the ad hoc group that was formed by AWD that included membership from LOPAC. Um, and everybody at that group agreed that it made sense to, for this, this program to be housed at LOPAC or funded by LOPAC so that the users.
Everyone agrees there, I, I, I'm thinking further down the road. For instance, Mr. DeRoche asked a question. As a homeowner, I say pound sand. No, you're not inspecting my thing, and by the way, this language is inappropriate.
Yep.
Functionally incorrect. The city can't make LOPAC inspect my, inspect my, uh, septic system, so I'll see you never.
Well, why can't the city? Wait, wait, why?
The city, the city doesn't have authority.
Eric, why can't the city?
The city can do the inspection. We're trying to shift that cost, um, to be shared by all the users of the water. Um, could somebody argue that someday? Sure, somebody could argue anything.
Could we just change it to shall be inspected and not even put LOPAC in there? Because if it's not enforceable, it shouldn't be in there, as far as I'm concerned.
So that's what you're saying?
Yep, you can recommend whatever you want. I mean, this is what LOPAC asked for, it's what the ad hoc committee recommended, and it's what our city attorney, um, suggested as language based on all that information. But if you want to soften it, you can.
I like the way it is now, I mean, I, I feel like, you know, just exactly what Eric had said, right? Like, LOPAC, the entity, and we can't refer the fact that they may or may not have known what they were doing at the time, which I think I heard you say that, that they're the ones that, you know, suggested it, city attorneys, you know, approved it, so I'm not.
If you prefer something different, that's, that's perfectly fine with staff.
Does the or its designee mean that if they decide that they don't want to do it, that it gets shifted over to the city or whomever else the city decides to do it? I mean, is that why the or its designee is in there? Although it does imply that it's the designee of LOPAC, not, not the city.
Yeah, they could designate the city plumbing inspector, um, they could designate a private contractor, they could, if they don't physically have the staff capacity to do it, then that would give the property owner the ability to hire a qualified private inspector and provide the report back to LOPAC for review.
What if he said such as LOPAC?
Sure, whatever, it, it has to be an enforceable statement, we can't compel them. We can't actually enforce this, this ordinance, that's all. I, I get that LOPAC's on board.
I wonder why Sally was on board.
What?
I wonder why Sally was on board.
I don't know why Sally was on board, but I'd be interested to hear her, her argument for why this is an enforceable ordinance since.
Okay, so that, this is a workshop, so we want to take that away?
Yeah, if, I would love to hear, if Sally can come back with something reasonable, that, that, that could satisfy that, that would be fine, but I just don't think this is.
I mean, you, you open, yeah, you have a, a reasonable.
Yep, we can get an opinion specifically on that.
Thank you, Evan.
I would also love to see some verbiage in there about priority of, like such as not having a septic design on file, like be more of a priority than, you know, a house that just got it two years ago.
Yep. Yeah, we're looking at, we have most of the systems in the watershed mapped with their design linked to the GPS point on the lot. Um, but we're looking at prioritizing the systems, we could do them by age or a lack of a design, but also by proximity to the lake, we start close to the lake and work our way out. We certainly could prioritize based on the ones that don't have a design too.
Well, I think you could mean the ones closest to the watershed without systems on file. You know, more of a priority than a new build, that's all I'm saying.
Absolutely, and that program's not shelled out, that's something we'd be working with LOPAC on over the next six to twelve months.
Well, if LOPAC is the entity that shall be doing this, I assume they get to make the priorities, not us. Again, not trying to beat a dead horse here, but there's a reason why this is problematic.
Yep.
I mean, what if LOPAC ends in ten years, not saying it will, but hypothetically, LOPAC could go away, you know?
Yep.
So I do agree with Evan in that aspect, like what happens, you know, when we're looking at this ten years from now and there's no LOPAC?
Yeah, we'd have to revisit this in forum with whoever's in these chairs in the council at the time.
Which Evan will probably be here. With his cane.
Uh, who's going to pay for the inspection?
So that is the primary reason, um, I mean, LOPAC's charged with protecting the water quality of the lake. Auburn has put the bill entirely on the land use enforcement in the Lake Auburn watershed for decades. Um, there's cooperation with LOPAC in the Auburn Water District, but Auburn pays for the lawyers, Auburn pays for the code enforcement officers that do the inspections, write the notices of violation. Um, and the shift to try to reference LOPAC here is a very intentional one to help them be able to fulfill their mission to protect the lake, but also so that the water users of the two cities share the cost of the staff capacity, um, and legal fees for that.
So when I sell a house in Cumberland County, it's the buyer who pays, at the point of sale at least, you know what I mean? So I would like to see that too, I mean, it shouldn't be on the city, it should be on the point of sale.
Well, I'm saying if somebody, um, somebody has a failing septic system, they don't want to fix it. Um, Auburn staff does the inspection, um, Auburn staff writes the notice of violation and corresponds with the property owner. Um, and Auburn staff makes the decision of when to file a lawsuit and spend five grand on legal fees. Um, that enforcement for watershed protections would over time be shifted so that LOPAC is taking a bigger role in that, is the goal. But Auburn doesn't necessarily pay for the fix, but we paid it, we put in the effort to compel the property owner to comply with the ordinance. And Lewiston doesn't have a part in that, um, yet they use more than half of the water. That's the, the intent of that LOPAC reference is to start to share that burden with.
Hate for Auburn to have that in a point of sale is what I'm saying. Like that should be definitely not on Auburn's.
And right now it is.
Right, that's what I mean.
Force the compliance, but the property owner, buyer and seller would have to agree who's paying for the repair.
So it's different in different counties, obviously, but.
I don't think it is.
It is.
I think if, if Portland said you had to replace your septic system, the buyer.
Wouldn't be calling a LOPAC, the buyer would be doing it or the seller.
And I'm not saying that LOPAC will fix the septic system.
No, I'm not either.
Be the one telling you to fix the septic.
Right, but paying that inspection, I'm just trying to, there's no reason for Auburn to incur that.
And that's what we do now.
Yeah.
Even at the point of sale, you're inspecting?
We're not at the point of sale, um, but we are inspecting for failures, we're inspecting for new systems. Um, if there's a concern about a failure, yes. If there's a replacement system, then yes, we're processing the permits, uh, we're doing the inspections, uh, we're responding to any complaints that neighbors may have about their neighbor's system. Auburn is doing all that right now, but not at point of sale. Unless it's shoreline zone, then sometimes we have to.
Okay, any other questions before moving on? I think we're good, okay, staff, do you have what you need?
Sure, yeah, and we'll get an opinion on that language around.
Yeah, I appreciate that, no, I think that's good.
From Sally.
All right.
Um, so what we're looking for is hopefully the board to make a motion that we can schedule this for public hearing with that opinion for the November meeting.
I would make such a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Motion carries.
So, um, the next piece, next item is, um, related, um, but it's really the change from, uh, one acre rural residential zone, um, wherever that exists in the watershed to, um, a three acre minimum for new lots going forward to offset any increase in density. Um, we have, uh, a number of different analyses of how many units can be created under this scenario, um, with and without the three acre change if we do the septic standard. Um, FB Environmental, um, we did our own internal analysis with an intern Evan Ma, and, um, CEI also did an analysis. All of the consultants agree that this change combined with the, um, septic standard combined with the lot size change results in a reduction of the total number of lots, um, and an improved wastewater standard. Um, so, um, we are looking to do that if the wastewater standard is changed, that we also change the lot size from one acre to three acres, um, wherever it's currently one acre in the watershed. I remember one of the big disputes was whether or not the ag zone had strong enough protections to prevent a house every ten acres. Uh, we've since adopted an ordinance that, um, prohibits housing in the ag zone tied to a farm, so I think that, that dispute is over. Hey, we have the maps, if there are any questions about specific areas, but, um, basically we are looking at any of the areas that are the, the, I guess the second one from the left is probably the easiest without the watershed showing. Uh, many of the areas that are the brown RR zone, rural residential, um, would become, um, low-density country residential with the primary difference being the one acre minimum changing to three acres as well as an increase in the frontage requirement from two fifty to three twenty-five.
Do any of those? So, it looks really clean cut, I'm just curious, so we're, we still have this situation where potentially we could have front parcels of, in one, in one zone and back parcels being another and that type of thing, right? We're really just, it, we're not going, we're not following property lines, we're not doing anything like that, we're just doing straight up, one for the other.
Yeah, we didn't propose any change in the actual boundaries of the two residential zones, but any of the areas that have a one acre minimum we're proposing become a three acre. You're correct, we didn't change the fact that they're strip zones along existing roads or, or any of those. If you look at the combined LDCR and RR zones, those boundaries are not, not different in the proposal.
Yep, the other change with that, um, is besides just turning it from one acre to three acre minimums, it would also be increasing the road frontage from a minimum of two hundred fifty feet to a minimum of three hundred twenty-five feet. So that's an additional thing to tack on there.
I think if you were to try to change those boundaries, then we would had, definitely have to rerun the calculation of the number of potential buildable lots, um, to ensure that we're not creating more buildable lots if they were becoming larger residential zones. And that there is still, one of the key pieces, I think, is that there is still an overall, albeit slight, um, reduction in the total number of buildable lots in the watershed.
I think this one's pretty straightforward, so I'm going to make a motion that we hold a public hearing on this at our next regular meeting.
Second.
Do I have a second, second? All those in favor? And discussion, all those in favor? Okay, excellent, perfect.
All right. I agree. Meaning.
Thank you. And the last one, the last piece of the workshop is, um, we now have the main drinking water program recommended boundary in the Graylawn pit. Um, it's been called the conservative boundary. I think it is very conservative based on, um, the data that we have in hand, um, currently. Um, the two consultants, FB Environmental, CDM Smith, and the main drinking water program, um, as well as the ad hoc committee, based on those opinions, agree, um, that it's clear that the areas, um, south of this new proposed line, um, are draining away from the lake, both topography wise, surface water and groundwater. Um, we did have sort of, and you can see it in this, this, uh, graphic, sort of a wide line. When we received the letter from main drinking water, it was like a three by five inch image and we tried to blow that up to be compatible with our GIS. And I think it was close, um, but we've since used the actual data layer that came from CDM Smith and was used by main drinking water. And we have that exact boundary well defined in the, the official maps. So, um, what staff is proposing, that we do change the boundary of the Lake Auburn watershed, but we follow the main drinking water program recommended boundary rather than the one that you considered over a year ago.
So I've done a lot of thinking about this. I've gone back and I've read the overlay language quite a bit. The proposed language, um, is essentially, uh, identical to what's currently there, um, however the word boundaries is added. Okay? The Lake Auburn watershed overlay district is that section of the city in which surface and subsurface waters ultimately flow or drain into Lake Auburn as such section is delineated on a watershed map and survey by the Auburn Water District on file in the office of, and it tells us where these things are on file. It would seem to me that the intent of defining the watershed overlay district in this way is to say that the overlay district ought to match the watershed boundaries and that the watershed boundaries are the purview of AWD, right? A non-political board. Okay? So it would seem to me that the intent was to actually create a boundary that was non-political. That is to say not acted upon by vote of unelected body or politicians. Why? So, so there's that piece, but it seems to me that the language here states that it shall match that map that the water district has. And so if the water district doesn't change their map, it doesn't matter that we change ours. The map, because the words are quite clear, that map doesn't constitute the boundaries. This language represents the boundaries. So why are we doing this to begin with? If AWD were to accept the change in the watershed boundary, our watershed overlay district automatically would follow.
So there are multiple decisions that have to be made for different maps. And I think the intent is to match the physical drainage boundary, as you said, of the either draining into the lake or out of the lake. AWD and LawPAC also have to make amendments for this to have full effect. But AWD can't amend Auburn zoning ordinance. So I think there has to be a decision by.
They, they're not amending the zoning ordinance. The ordinance says our watershed overlay district shall coincide with this map that is created by the Auburn Water District.
Are you guys following Evan on this train of thought? So Evan's saying the Auburn Water District really is the one that drives the bus and then we just align our language with Auburn Water District.
Our Lake Auburn overlay.
Is that in the first couple of pages, Evan, or is that just from knowledge that you have? I was just trying to find it in the paperwork.
No, that's his, he just said he was, I'm thinking about it.
So I've got the, I've got section 60 open here, but.
Okay, thank you.
That, the language I read is actually in the previous item packet and it is page one of six of the proposed, um.
Dave, it's the packet with the, with the blue highlighted changes.
Right. And it's section 60 dash nine five one, boundaries and definition, definitions A, boundaries, and then it describes the boundaries. So AWD isn't changing our ordinance. Our, our ordinance literally says whatever AWD has decided is the watershed boundary, our watershed overlay will, will coincide with.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. Um, both boards need to amend. The city of Auburn needs to amend their Lake Auburn watershed overlay boundary through a public process.
If AWD changes the watershed.
Yeah.
The overlay automatically changes.
So Evan feels like we're putting the cart before the horse, right?
We're putting the cart before the horse. I also think that what it does is it takes a political decision out of play here in that we're entrusting the boundaries of the water, of the overlay district to AWD and LawPAC, who are beholden unto EPA, main drinking water program, the PUC. Instead of vesting the boundary in seven voting members of the city council.
Yep. I hear your point. Um, we need to amend it at both boards to make it take a full effect.
What, what, what are we amending?
We are amending the city of Auburn's Lake Auburn watershed overlay official map.
So we would be amending that and so it would no longer match the definition of the boundaries within our ordinance.
So Auburn Water is also amending the map that we're referencing that.
If they didn't.
Um, then there would be a conflict between the two.
And we would have a map that doesn't match our definition of what the map should be.
Could be. Yep. If they didn't.
However, if AWD, I, I don't understand. I'll, I'll back up on this one. If Sally, if Sally can explain why AWD changing it doesn't automatically change ours.
Yep.
And that we're required to do it as well?
Yep.
Fine.
I, I.
Yeah, I, I would agree with Evan, but the way that that's written is pretty clear. If they change it, we change. Cause they drive the overlay district.
It also says that it matches the physical drainage area of the lake, which we know it doesn't. Um, but there is a legislative process required for us to amend ourselves.
It says as, as such, as such section is delineated on a watershed map. It says, it, it follows that where the, the surface and subsurface water, waters ultimately flow or drain into Lake Auburn as delineated.
Yep.
On a watershed map and survey, surveyed by the Auburn Water District.
I, I mean, that technically means that it's already amended well beyond what we're showing here. Cause they've already done that and I don't believe they've rescinded it.
That should be a question. That should be a question. And, and I, I will reiterate that if that is the case, that if, if I'm reading this correctly, I am much happier because, um, I would much rather a board like AWD who's got to work with EPA, main drinking water with PUC, has to demonstrate through science any, any proposed changes. I would much rather that they be in charge of defining where this map is. If this map is supposed to coincide with the watershed boundary, then.
We too have to give.
Then us and city council.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to debate it with you anymore, but we too have to have a open public process to amend a zoning map that's adopted by the city. But we can't be different than the Auburn Water District.
Do we know when the Auburn Water District is going to? If they're going to, when they're going to make a change?
So they are working on that. I suspect it'll be done, um, by the November planning board meeting.
Okay.
What we're looking to do is, um, have this scheduled for a public hearing in November. Your recommended, recommendation doesn't change anything. Um, it just gives the council some guidance in whether or not you support moving in this direction.
So Evan, am I hearing you say you would feel more comfortable having kind of the body that governs this area make their educated decision and then we obviously review it and then follow suit thereafter versus us doing it first and then kind of hoping that they then align with us?
Well, yeah, cause I think us doing it first is literally contradictory to the ordinance language that's sitting here. And that if they do do it, the ordinance language sitting here necessitates that ours automatically changed because ours is supposed, ours, it doesn't say we will align with. It says ours is theirs. Okay. Our map is their map. And so, um, I don't want to hold up having a public hearing next meeting. But.
I agree.
I would want some serious clarification around that.
Well, if we have a public hearing, it's, it's theorizing that it's may happening. You, you know, you know how I feel. Like I, 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 I wanted to do things judiciously so that we are truly engaging our board and the public on truly the matters at hand. And it feels like we're really, really close, but we're not there. Like I want to see the Auburn Water District like actually make the change based upon their guiding principles and then we then thereafter, right?
Can we, can we do that while we prepare for a public hearing though? And if that's not done, you can table this. But is there any reason to stop the process?
Would our public hearing have any change or thought process in their decision? No.
I, I think that they would rather be adopting something that there's a wider agreement on, but it doesn't change what they could adopt. They've already adopted.
I mean, are they going to watch our meeting and say, these people came up to the podium and said XYZ? So.
Uh, I, there's agreement that the main drinking water program line is a safe line to adopt. And I think we'll see that adopted at AWD as well as, um, some amendments to the LawPAC, um, bylaws that reference some of these changes if they choose to adopt those.
I, I, my only question on, I guess, unless we know exactly what the change is being proposed to do, I don't feel that we should be soliciting feedback on something that is not clear and defined. So I guess I would, I would hold, I would suggest holding public comment until we actually know that there's a change coming.
Cause we've been down this road before where we pushed for public comment. We've had it and then something has changed and then we'd have to go back and have it again. And, um, and then I think it just conflates and confuses issues.
I think for the public though, I would like to have all, it would be beneficial to have all of this discussed at one meeting. So is it the kind of thing where we could make a motion? Do people feel comfortable saying, yeah, we're going to make a motion to have a public hearing on this topic only if prior to our meeting, AWD has adopted a change and legal, um, advice is given as to whether or not we even need to make a change?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I don't know if we even have a timeline for AWD though, do we?
I don't have an exact timeline. I know that they're working on it. They've already adopted something different than what we have. Um, they adopted what the city adopted last year. So we have the legal advice that we need to have our own public process to amend this as a zoning map. We already know that from our council, legal council. So staff is recommending that we hold the public hearing, but we can absolutely know where the Auburn Water District and LawPAC are in their process by the time we have that public hearing. And you could table it if you wanted to. You could still hear from people.
We, but we could. And we could still go forward with the public hearing disclosing that we know there is a discrepancy in the verbiage and that we publicly disclose.
So then what's the, what are we discussing? Like, you know what I mean? We're just soliciting feedback on probably our process? And, and to me, it's not a completed product, to be frank with you. That's how I feel. We're, we're not soliciting public hearing on a, on a product that's complete.
We, yeah, we have a product that is recommended by the regulator, the main drinking water program. Auburn Water is in the process of adopting an amended boundary.
Yep. And then they'll adopt it and then it comes to us. I feel like that's kind of like tiered approach. And I guess if people want to go with Evan's agreement, I would be favorable to that in that we would hold a public comment he, hearing if we had a final recommendation from the Auburn Water District.
And your decision doesn't change the map. That happens when the council chooses to vote.
Sure.
I would argue that AWD's decision changes the map based on our ordinance.
I hear you.
We don't have to have that debate.
Eric, can you clarify something? You said that the AWD already did make a change, that the city already adopted? What does that mean?
The city adopted.
Did we actually review it and make a change or propose a change?
Yeah, the city adopted a boundary that moved the watershed boundary closer to the lake than what the main drinking water program is comfortable with a year, year and a half ago now. Following that, the Auburn Water District adopted that same boundary. And as far as I know, they have not rescinded that decision, but the city has repealed that decision. I can confirm that with the water district superintendent, but I don't believe they undid their decision to change that map. So in that line, Evan, it's already closer to the lake than what we're proposing, if that's how we look at it.
It sounds like we're out of compliance with the language of what we have though, then.
So this is a way to bring the two back together with the approval of the regulating agency, the main drinking water program and the consensus of staff and counselors that have been part of, um, a public discussion about how to come up with a set of standards and boundaries that everybody's comfortable enough with, um, that some of the, the legal actions can end. We've been trying to work through a process that informs all of the groups affected by these changes to come up with a set of standards, including this boundary that everybody's comfortable with. So if you want to not schedule it, um, I think that's unfortunate, but that's, that's your call.
I, I would make a motion that we have a public hearing on this topic at our next regular planning board meeting contingent upon AWD having made a decision or recommendation and that we be provided with legal counsel's justification for the need to do this on our part rather than follow the strict language within the ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I'd second that.
Okay. Do I have discussion?
I just have a question. So you just said for them to either have a decision or a recommendation. Can we ask them for a recommendation instead of a decision so we can have public comment on that?
Yes, I think we have that, but we'll make sure that you have either a decision or a recommendation from AWD.
Because if they're already making a decision, then like Evan said, their map is our map.
Yep. They made a decision over a year ago that I, I don't think has been rescinded.
Well, I decided to lose weight over a year ago.
Yep.
You know what I mean? Like we can just like, you know what I mean? Like.
Yeah, but a zoning map doesn't change on a whim. It requires in a vote of a board that's authorized to create the boundary.
Well, I'd be, I'm really looking forward to legal counsel's interpretation because clearly we've already made an interpretation when they made the change a year ago that we weren't going to do something. Um, even though we were, it looks like by the letter we should have.
Yeah, either we don't need to actually do this based on this language or the language needs to change. One or the other. Like that's what's going to come out of this.
Legal counsel requires us to have a public hearing at planning board and then a public hearing and two readings at council to amend the boundaries of any of our zoning maps, including this.
Okay. So seeing no further discussion, um, all those in favor? Okay. Motion carries. Excellent. Okay. We just have one more workshop?
Oh yeah, really. I guess it's relatively minor compared to the discussion we've already had. But when the boundary changes, um, what new zone should replace the ag zone outside of the watershed? But when the boundary changes, um, what new zone should replace the ag zone outside of the watershed? Um, our comp plan recommends, um, a district called the Commercial Development District that most closely aligns with our general business zone. Um, staff's recommending that. I know there was some debate about that also allowing commercial uses. Um, but I think that most of that concern was related to having a boundary of the watershed that people weren't comfortable with. Um, so either the general business zone or the residential zone that is used as the density standard in general business. Um, multifamily suburban could be options, but we recommend general business because it matches the comp plan most closely. Not that we would change this unless the watershed changes, but that's our recommendation.
Hey, I think you just touched on, um, exactly what I was going to say. This workshop relies heavily on the proposed watershed boundary line, which was just discussed. So this workshop is contingent on whatever changes the Water District does. So it's this kind of a premature conversation until we know what's going to go forward regarding the maps.
I think we will know at the time of public hearing. Um, we made these decisions before, as did the Auburn Water District in the same, same evening. Um, but, um, yeah, we're looking to set them up for the same night. Um, but if the one, the watershed boundary doesn't change, then we would not recommend doing this.
I think the general business works perfectly because that would, with the, yeah, if there is an additional, you know, substantial amount of housing that goes up there, you, you may even want some smaller businesses in there to support uh, the needs of that smaller community that could be in there.
I know that they're looking to include a recreational facility and potentially like coffee shop or a restaurant as part of a larger housing development in this zone. Works great to allow for that.
And there's a lot of other activity that's recently been built up on that road.
Yeah, and it's close to other general business. I mean, it's not like it's.
It's contiguous with other G D zones.
That's key as a contiguousness.
Yep. So if we're comfortable with having the public hearing, obviously we know that we would not move forward to this unless the watershed boundary changes. Um, we'd ask that you schedule it for next month's planning board meeting.
How do you guys feel about that?
I'm on board with that.
I'm sorry?
I am on board with that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to have a public hearing on this zone change specifically, uh, to change the zone to general business at the November planning board meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All right. So all those in favor? Excellent. Motion carries. Perfect. Alrighty, let me find my agenda. Okay. That is it for the workshops at this point in time on public comments. So anyone, members of the public would like to come forward, state your name, five minutes, your address.
Stephen Beal, 575 Johnson Road, excuse me. Um, I'd like the opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on a combination of workshop items seven and eight and then make a briefer three-minute presentation on workshop item five. There's so much matter in here that I think I can shed some considerable light on, on items seven and eight, but it was, it'll take the entire five minutes to do just that.
Okay, so I just a point of order because I, you know, I really do like to stay within the parameters just to be fair to everybody. So staff, would it be reasonable to have the five minutes and then anything additional can be put in writing to us?
Yeah, that's entirely up to you.
And that's, I, I feel comfortable with that. I, I feel like, um, yep, thank you.
All right, then I'll make these remarks on all of these topics within five minutes in total. Uh, the item, item number eight, seeking to, uh, or scheduling a hearing to, uh, change the zoning in the area of the watershed between the new watershed boundary line and Grace Lawn Road simply can't be scheduled for November because we don't know what the watershed boundary line will be. And you have to give public notice, uh, because it's a map amendment, 14 days in advance of the meeting and notice in the newspaper 12 and seven days respectively before the notice of the meeting. And you can't give that notice to change zoning in an existing zone without knowing what the parameters of that zone are. It's simply a legal impossibility. So that has to be deferred to perhaps the December meeting, depending on what happens to the zoning change, uh, in November. To the watershed boundary change in November. So that's the subject of that. I'll just say one or two more sentences about, uh, item number seven. What we've all come to learn or those of us who have been following this stuff in minute detail for the last two years have come to learn is that the ultimate authority for determining where that watershed boundary is is not the City of Auburn Council, not the planning board, not the Auburn Water District, not the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission. It's the Drinking Water Group at Maine DHHS. That has delegated authority from the federal EPA under 1995 amendments to the Safe Drinking Water Act. Uh, there's been a lot of very genteel back and forth. The Drinking Water Group is not cramming this down on the subordinate authorities. It made that recommended proposed drinking water line, which the Water District and the Watershed Protection Commission and, uh, the staff here are willing to voluntarily adopt and go forward. But the ultimate designation of where that line is, is the main drinking water group's designation. And that brought forth the much more refined line because they had originally drawn that in a rather thick magic marker and that's been now been reproduced in GIS form, which we'll have in paper very, very shortly, within a day or two. So that's, that's the reasoning behind that. Uh, and all of this other business about who goes first and second and who has to agree with whom is subordinate to what the Drinking Water Group has pleasantly and genteely told us is the line. Uh, and they haven't crammed it down on anyone, but they expect all of these other entities to follow that. The Water District has some special difficulty with that because they have to amend a bylaw to match their map. And that's, uh, held them up in September. I think, believe they're hoping, hoping to do that at their October 20th meeting. That's unusual complication just by virtue of the way their charter is drafted. Now, uh, as to, uh, agenda item five tonight, the workshop on all these changes relating to the watershed generally and septic and other land use controls, those really need to be dealt with as separate agenda items. And there's, the reason for that is there's a requirement in the Auburn City Charter, uh, under section 2.6 of the Charter subsection C, which says that all ordinances, orders and resolves, except resolves making appropriations shall be confined to one subject clearly expressed in its title. There are like, I counted five separate subjects that you discussed, some at great length. The septic ordinance design issue is a very time-consuming subject unto itself. And then the buffer zone, one zone for no tilling of land within 100 feet, uh, no new septic systems within 400 feet. Uh, all of those things are related to say nothing of the fact that the one acre to three acre lot designation for minimum lot size is directly tied to the new septic design system. And that one acre to three acre matter is item number six. There are just far too many items that are being conflated here. And under the charter, those should be considered as separate public hearings and separate items for independent action on each one of them. Uh, and as to that last matter, the fact that the charter requires that, uh, not only is that my reading of it, but I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Cleveland, who was the chairman of the Charter Commission, which specifically drafted that language. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I am John Cleveland and I do live at 183 Davis Avenue in Auburn. And, uh, I was a part of the Charter Commission that, uh, drafted and that was adopted, that you're currently using. In fact, I did chair that meeting. Um, I want to talk on two subjects though, and I'll come back to this in a moment. Um, under the issue that, uh, Mr. Beal raised in regards to the public hearing on any proposed zone changing at the Grace Lawn area, he's absolutely correct and I, and I totally support him. You can't, you don't physically have enough time to do the necessary and required public hearing so that the public knows what it is they're asked to be commenting on because you won't have the information back to know whether or not you're going to act on it or not. So it makes a lot more sense if you move that to your December meeting, have plenty of time to do the adequate public hearing on that. But let me come back to the, uh, issue of having, uh, only one item per subject. Um, that was unanimous decision of the Charter Commission. We discussed it at length. There are two important reasons why we put that in the charter. The first important reason is to make it very clear that each subject item to be acted on by the planning board, but most certainly by the city council is one subject. So that you don't bundle a lot of things together, as you see at other governmental agencies, where you put a bunch of stuff together and you may agree on some, but not others. But your only choice is to either vote no or yes on the whole package, even though you might want to make some changes or have concerns about some of the items, but not the others. So this is a process by which it allows both the policymakers and secondly, as importantly, the public to be able to know easily what each of these items are. We struggled, all of us, including you to some degree, and you asked some great questions tonight on trying to unwrap what all this is about. Imagine for a second what an ordinary citizen would be facing to try to come and comment on all of these things bundled together. This is no recommendation to deflect or not move forward. We want you to. But we want not to have a missed, not to have it unintentionally maybe creating a problem that's in conflict with the charter language, and we think it does create that. Uh, again, I think there are at least four or five or six items you're going to be in there. You're going to be talking about non-hobby farms not being allowed. You're prohibiting new developments, there's language in that, within the ag zone for dwellings. You're talking about agricultural buffer strips to be increased to 100 feet. You're prohibiting the spreading of sludge within the area. And then you have the whole new septic system design plan to talk about. That is a lot and they're not all directly related. They all try to achieve a similar goal, but they do so separately. And policymakers and the public should be able to comment on each one and support every single one that they want to support. And if they don't support some, state the reasons why they don't. So I would recommend that you have separate public hearings on these. So it's clear which each one is and it's clear on what your recommendations for the city council will be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other members? Okay, alrighty. All right. Um, I think we all caught on to that first comment, right? Um, the, the zone change, right, in general business and the 14 days. This feels embarrassing a little bit. I'll be frank with you.
Yeah, so there, there are two separate decisions. There are two separate zoning changes. Um, we believe that you can publish the maps for each of them and the public notice um, to meet the requirements of the ordinance and everybody has a chance to look at that. But then if you, if you made a change to one, then you would probably also, uh, be asked to make a change to the other one. So I don't, we can, and we can run it by legal counsel. I don't see any reason why they can't be considered the same night as long as the changes are depicted on an official map for each of them and the proper notices are sent for each of them.
I would agree. We are choosing to make the rezoning contingent upon a change in the map. However, we could recommend that change in zoning without a change in the map. We are choosing to tie them together, but functionally, there's no requirement that they be tied together. They, they could be treated as two separate items, um, procedurally. So, um, I don't, I would agree. I don't see an issue with that for that, for that specific reason.
We can make sure we include that in the request of things we want legal advice on, but we can make more than one decision in one night as long as the documents are all available for the public notice period.
With regard to the comments around the public hearing, um, there were several items lumped together in that one workshop that were actually treated separately when we saw them to begin with.
Yep.
Um, I could hear, uh, what Mr. Beal and, um, Mr. Cleveland are saying. I don't think it would hurt anything for us to split things out. Functionally, my preference would be that we do so in such a way that we are having a public hearing over the entirety of the change with individual votes and individual opportunities for public comment. Because I, in, in, in the same vein, uh, that, as it was pointed out, that is important that individuals be able to comment on specific pieces without having to either, uh, be in favor of the whole or, or on only one piece. Um, it's also important that it be presented in such a way that people understand that they are all intrinsically tied together as one group of ordinance changes meant to achieve a specific goal. Um, and so that, that's what, I hear, I hear what was being said and I, I think that those were good points. But I think it just really needs to be presented as a whole in some way.
I think that accomplishes all the goals. I think that's a win-win all around. I'd be in favor of that approach.
So, um, I'm hearing one public hearing with a, with a string of suggested motions that you can hit one at a time. So that way you can consider each individually, but within one single public hearing.
And the public comment to be provided for each of those votes, not one singular public comment.
Makes sense. And I think that allows you legally to reject one and accept another or however you decide. We'll set it up that way. But I do agree that it's important that people can also look at all of them together to see how they interact with each other.
And the variety of land uses around in the watershed area anyway is going to warrant different people wanting to speak about different ones. Um, while the septic system kind of does everybody, there's a lot of other uses that only impact a few people.
We'll set it up that way.
It, it reminds me of the ag zone discussion, that what is included in the ag zone, we had a multiple of different definitions of what's considered agricultural use, but it was all regarding one zone. And we didn't subdivide to have separate discussions about every single one of those things. And I think this is very similar to that scenario.
Yep. We'll split it up. So we make sure it's individual decisions and individual comment.
Perfect. Alrighty, we ready to move on to the miscellaneous items? I keep hitting that. I know that, um, I, I did like, um, your suggestion for the LD 2003. That was really good. So staff, you guys caught that, right? I don't, I don't think we have to reiterate it. I think that Dave did a good job articulating it.
We, we caught that and I think, um, the rules were just adopted about a week and a half ago. Um, the version that you have, the section, chapter five.
Okay.
Um, I was on a call last week trying to get some determinations on a main municipal and even, um, two attorneys on the same call don't agree on exactly what it says in all ways. Um, so I think we'll see some more guidance over the next couple of weeks. And, um, there's no case law. I think there's still some ambiguity. And we'll have to, we'll have to get our best advice from probably more than. from probably more than one attorney or maybe a second opinion on certain pieces of it.
I just have one thing to, to bring up. We did not consider pushing D42B all the way down to the Turnpike. Part of that was because it was not necessarily supported by the comprehensive plan. It's clear to me as we are starting to look further from our centers, in our urban center, that I think the planning board should revisit the work of understanding transects and possibly create an additional transect that would help meet the goals of the suburban district, which is described in the comprehensive plan, which doesn't really necessarily fit, 4.2 and 4.2B don't necessarily fit. However, some of our other zones don't necessarily fit either. If we're going to continue out, to me, it makes sense that we would do so with an additional transect. And I don't know when we want to do that, but just the idea, like, I think we should start considering that. It's going to be a long process, but...
Sure. Okay, and so I know from miscellaneous items, upcoming agenda items, our next agenda is going to be heavy, right? We have a lot of public hearings. So, like, do you have other agenda items that need to have happen next month? Okay, what are they?
There's at least one more, which is a petition to change a parcel on Riverside Drive from agriculture to rural residence. So it's, it's just a rezoning petition, citizen initiated.
Okay, and that's the only thing that you have? That's the only other thing that we have that is time-sensitive?
We are expecting some other proposals for December, and we do want to make sure we fit in a discussion about LD 2003 by the December meeting as well.
Okay.
Then may, maybe it makes sense to have a second workshop.
Yeah.
Late November, early December.
Okay, so from a board perspective, Paul and I will work with staff to ensure that we have reasonable meetings and we get the work done as well. Makes sense? You do a great job.
Yes. To Evan's point, just real quick, Eric, what do you think timeline would be for us to start thinking about, you know, what that other zone might look like? Clearly, we've talked a lot about the continuation down to the Turnpike on, on South Main, but knowing that there's nothing really that fits what we're trying to accomplish with the density. So what would be the potential timeline for those types of things?
I think that we are really trying to make sure that we carve out enough time to have the Lake Auburn discussions in November so the council get those, gets those back in November, December. There's no T, there's no LD 2003 police that's going to be, you know, pounding on our door on January 1st if we're not completely done. But we really think it's important to have a lot of that work done by January to show that we are working towards a final solution in that, even though the rules just came out in the beginning of October. So I would say we could, we could start those discussions. Maybe November is going to be a really heavy agenda. December, I think that and LD 2003, there's probably a lot of overlap. So that December meeting, we could probably start having that discussion. I know that we need something around eight units per acre to match up with the comp plan.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing you say is this just was ratified like two weeks ago, and it still is, feels like there's a little bit of attorney debate. So I just want to make sure that it's at the best passive point possible before we then, you know, engage and, you know, digest it.
Yeah, I think at a minimum in December, we could workshop it with some legal advice and identify any questions that remain.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for staff on miscellaneous items? All right, seeing none, I'd seek a motion to adjourn.